I'd like to lead to do the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, John. Any addition or deletion of agenda items?
I have no requested additions or deletions formally.
Introduction of those present. Can you do that, please? Can you see everybody, Kristin?
I can see everybody, so I will go ahead and announce everybody who I have as being present in the meeting. And if there's anybody who has not been called, you may then identify yourselves after that. So I have members of the board. I have Mike Beecher, John Malcolm, Bob Jones, Ed Cleveland, and Chuck Whedon. Others in attendance, I have Kristin Powers, Bob Morleano, Frank Nelson, Alan Turner, Rhonda Schlangen, Julie Mack, Deb Hawkins, Keith Mason, and Harry Van Meter.
Okay. Everybody accounted for? Guess so, huh?
Okay. And as other folks join the meeting, if they contribute to the meeting and identify themselves, we will then add them in as well.
Okay. Approval of the minutes. How did everybody feel about the minutes from the last meeting?
This is Bob. I will make a motion. We accept them as printed.
Anybody want to second them?
I'll second that. John?
Okay. Any more discussion? Do I need to do a roll call vote for this, Kristin?
Yes, I believe you do.
Everything. Okay. All in favor? And I'll start on my screen. Chuck?
Aye.
Aye. Ed?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Any animus? Thank you, Kristin.
Thank you.
Anybody pre-request anything, Kristin?
Nothing pre-requested, just Bob Morleano is on the agenda during the Emergency Management Director.
Okay. And you're fine with waiting till that slot, Bob, or do you want to go first?
No, I'm fine with waiting. I'll go with you.
Okay. We'll put you in your slot then. Thank you.
Okay.
Any announcements?
The only announcement I had was just what I said in the beginning, just as a reminder. This is Kristin for the roll call voting. You introduce yourself before speaking.
Great. Thank you. Zoning Administrator Report?
This is Kristin again. I have a report from Jonas Rosenthaler, zoning administrator. He has a Zoom meeting this evening at 6:30, so is not able to participate in the Select Boards meeting. One new permit was issued for March. One new permit issued thus far for April. Four permit applications were mailed and discussed with the potential applicants, needing to call them again. One zoning permit application zoning violation needs to be researched. He has gone back to 2014 to look and see if a permit was ever issued. The neighbor thinks the building is not on the person's property, but on the neighbor's property. We'll have a draft for a new permit application that can provide much more clarity, but it will not be on page, on one page, as I think that the Planning Commission is looking for. Thank you, Jonas.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments about Jonas's report?
Yeah, this is Harry. I do have a comment. I spoke with Jonas this afternoon, and that last sentence that he wrote there is really inaccurate. The Planning Commission doesn't want to limit the zone, the new zoning application to a single page, because we think it's inadequate. Jonas is working on a more, more comprehensive zoning application, which we're hoping to review next Monday.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. So you're, anybody else have other questions?
Ed Cleveland, I was just, is there any days that Jonas is in the office? Or is he taking messages from hell?
Wednesdays. He comes in on Wednesdays.
Okay. It still is Wednesdays.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Does he have a scheduled time, Deb, or does he just?
He usually comes in late morning and stays until early to mid-afternoon.
Okay.
Takes care of messages and applications and emails, and then he zips away.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Planning Commission?
That's one of the things I was going to talk about, the report that I just gave in discussing with Jonas. We plan to have elections of officers, for three, for three officers that we have for, on our next Monday meeting. That's going to be interesting. Any suggestions on how we take? We usually do a secret ballot, but we can't really do that with a Zoom. It's going to be a Zoom meeting. Are there any suggestions on how we take the votes on electing officers?
I, other than just do it right up front, do you think that some people will feel?
For a roll call vote?
Know that they wouldn't want a vote in front of everybody else, or?
That's something I can ask everybody before we, before we have the election. I don't know how else to do it.
I think under the circumstances, you really have no choice.
No, I agree with you. But I should ask everybody if they have any problem with, with a roll call vote in that kind of an instance.
Yeah.
So that's, that's it. We're going to continue our discussion of bylaws, bylaws revisions, and further discussions with Jonas about the zoning applications. And that's it.
Okay. Sounds good. Everything is all set for you to have a Zoom meeting tomorrow night, or next Monday?
On Monday, yes. We're using the library account, which I think you might have done probably your first meeting.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so we'll see how that goes.
Good. Anybody have any questions for Harry?
I just, this is Kristin. I have just one suggestion. There is something, Harry, it's just as like your name badge, basically, that comes up in Zoom. And right now, it says that you're the public library, so there is a need to change that if that's something that you want to do during your Zoom meeting, but.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, I thought I had changed that when I set up the meeting, but it just, it's still showing up as public library.
It's not the largest problem in the world to have.
No. I would rather say, I would rather say Planning Commission, but.
Yes.
Details.
Yeah, details.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all. Thanks.
Okay. Road Foreman? Oh, thanks.
Keith, Frank had one comment. Sorry, Keith, I did cut you off. Frank had one comment in response to Harry just letting him know that a state has a guide on all electronic meetings. Harry, do you have a copy of that?
No.
It's the, it's on the VLCT. I was.
Okay.
So I can email you the link from the VLCT with the guide.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
Okay, Keith, go ahead, please.
Okay, I noticed Kristin said that Alan Turner was there. We can start with him if you want. He's got a, oh, he approached John Malcolm and I about it last fall with culvert issue on the end of the Towesley Road that dumps down across his lawn and actually has potential to compromise his water system. And he had asked for some assistance from the town to correct it, which would mean that we would have to do something with the culvert. He had suggested we could eliminate it, push the water farther down the ditch, but I, I don't think we can, we should give up a culvert, because we have to fight to ever get them back if we give them up. So, once we have pre-existing status, we should probably keep it. That being said, we could probably do a good faith effort and move it or alter it in some means so that it didn't compromise his, his water system and, you know, come to some kind of a mutual agreement there. But even then, he may have to do something on his own to address what we do, you know, outside of the right of way. So, I believe he's at, on at the meeting there somewhere, and he may have something he wants to say.
Yeah, yeah, I'm thankful for any consideration. I'm, I'm just, would like to make some progress on some kind of knowing what a resolution might be and what the potential parts were. The, the, the initial cause of the problem, I'm not, I'm not quite sure of all of the history of the culvert, but I do know that the road bed was raised as I bought the house and moved in, and I hadn't seen the way the runoff was during the thaw time until, until that winter before we talked, Keith. But it clearly is significant. I did, in the letter, give the video links of, of showing how significant the water flow is into the dug well that I use for my water supply and into the open surface of the pond. So, and I think the, the state guidelines on roads are, are basically, don't, you know, don't let road runoff go into surface water. If at all possible, find a, find a way to move it, move it away from surface waters. And I was just wanting to have as much effort as is possible be made. As the, the culvert is a, quite a, quite a ways up the hill, the culvert proceeding from the Bella Villa land, and it dumps onto his own field. And I had suggested dumping most of the Bella Villa field that down from that culvert onto his own land rather than onto mine. But that may not work, but at any rate, all of that water flows down from the road and the field, all down the hill, and then dumps into my water supply. And I just want to know what we might be able to do about it, what recommendations would be.
I think I sent Alan's letter on to everybody on the board. Did you all get it?
Recently? When, Ed, when did you send it, Deb?
I sent it, well, when he sent it to me.
Well, it was last week when I sent it.
This is Chuck. I didn't receive it.
I sent it to the Gmail accounts.
To my knowledge, I never received it, but.
It might, I forwarded it to you guys, and I'll, I'll resend it again, but it was, you were all on it. That's why I didn't specifically send it to each of you, because you were all on it. But we can make sure that you get it again.
Yeah, it was the Gmail accounts, the Select Word Gmail accounts.
Yep. My purpose here at the meeting is just to be a squeaky wheel to get attention. And now that I've got attention, you don't, no need to discuss it further. I'd rather that people had a chance to look at the letter and perhaps hit the links and see what, what Keith was able to see. Wasn't the time of the runoff, but he did see the location of the culvert as, as with respect to my well. But the video and the photos do show where the culvert does pour into my, my well. And so, I'd appreciate it if you, those that would be involved in the decision would just take a glance and, and then follow up with me a response to the letter or invite me in for another discussion if it, if it, if it was, if that was the right way forward. But I've gotten everyone's attention, I hope, and I'll just wait until a response is able to be made. Does that sound good?
Yes, that's reasonable. We should have a response by the next meeting and options that we can, we can review with you.
Okay, great. Yeah, that'd be great. Options and a little discussion if needed to understand the options. That'd be fantastic. Thanks very much. And I'll, I'll probably listen to a bit more of the meeting, but I may bow out in a few minutes after this as my place on the agenda is done.
Well, thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Keith, when you mentioned that you may be able to do some work on the culvert, but some work may need to be done on the landowner's portion, is that like, would he need to redirect the water flow after you altered the culvert a little bit? Or would he need to burn around?
Yeah, he, he may need to do something. We, I mean, we, we probably can't eliminate the fact that we're dumping water there. It's probably, that's probably not one of our options. We can alter where, we can move the culvert down slightly, or if we eliminate the culvert completely, we're pushing water considerably far down the road. And it's, if, you know, there's a, there's a culvert there for a reason, and it's right at the Towesley Hill Road, Rafter Road intersection, okay? And it goes under Rafter Road. But the water comes down the ditch line from, well, it was Gordy Brown's old house, and then goes just out the Rafter Road and dumps across. But it, right now, it is a direct shot right at what he's trying to protect there. So I certainly understand his concern. But, you know, we have some pre-existing status to keep a culvert there, and it's, I just think we're asking for trouble to try to push it 100 feet or more farther down the ditch. We're just transferring all of the problem onto us then. So we got to kind of find a balance there, I think. If we just move the culvert slightly down and alter the angle of it so that it tends to bypass, even then, it's probably going to go towards his pond and his well. And he may have to put a swale or a berm or something on his property to, to take that water and divert it away. But we can make it so that it's not such a direct hit right to, to where he's trying to protect, so.
Just a point of, point of correction. It's not right at the Rafter Road junction. It's about 50, 50 yards down from the, from the Rafter Road junction with Towesley Hill. So it does carry all the water down Towesley Hill and then carries it 50 yards along, you know, along my land between the Bella Villa and my land. And yeah, what I would be interested in is, is either getting rid of it before all of that water off the hill hits my land and just leave it on the Bella Villa land, which is where it started. And then the other aspect is if it can be pushed down a little bit, just as far as it can be pushed. But I'm certainly willing to put my shoulder to the wheel as needed. But just want to know what the options might be.
Okay. John, would you be able to look that over with Keith at some point?
Sure. I'm happy to do it.
Would you be able to look that over with Keith and see, and maybe, maybe you can include Alan with, with some ideas? It's, it's hard to talk about at a meeting without being right there looking at everything. Is that something you could try and coordinate, Keith?
Absolutely. John can let me know what his timeframe is, and we'll include Alan.
I'm very flexible, having left the farm in six weeks.
You can't see it from there, John, but we'll.
Do a drive-by.
We'll try to, yeah, I mean, you can, it's pretty readily apparent if you get down there and take a look at it. And we'll, we'll, we'll try to get something scheduled, probably the first part of next week, where we can get down there and look at it.
Okay.
Now, we can sit out on lawn chairs and discuss it 20 feet apart if you want.
Yeah.
Fine.
I'm kind of talking without even really thinking about every, everything that's going on. I wonder if maybe Keith, if you had a, an idea of what you think would work best, you could put a couple of sticks with flags so that it was obvious without having to, you know, be right face-to-face discussion with it. Does that sound?
No, I can certainly, I can certainly do something like that, too, yes.
You know, maybe just put a couple of sticks with flags on what you, what you would intend, and maybe possibly if you think that a berm or some swale or something around his well, you could, you could put something else indicating what, what might be appropriate, in your opinion, to kind of help divert the water from the direction of the well and such.
Right. I will do that.
Okay, that would, in that, that way, everybody, you can just kind of drive in and look at it without having to, to have, you know, any personal contact.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Keith, for that. And John, I appreciate that, and you guys can get together with Alan and, and work through this. I'm sure we can come up with some resolution.
Okay, thanks very much, gentlemen. I appreciate your time and attention, and I'll let you move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keith, I'll look forward to you or John being in contact with me over the coming week.
Okay. Take care.
Yep.
All right. Kristin, you received my proposed work schedule for two weeks?
Hi, yes. I forwarded it to the board just before the meeting, but would you like me to share it, or?
No, whatever they like.
What would, would you gentlemen like for me to present Keith's report? Or would you like Keith to give you a rundown?
This is Chuck. I have it on, I haven't read it yet, but it's ready for me to read, so.
Well, let me tell you a little bit about what's happening at the Roads Crew.
That would be great.
This is Kristin. We will, the Roads Crew will be changing culverts and cleaning ditches and shoulders as well as cutting brush on the Switch Road and Betts Bridge, Betts Bridge Road in preparation for applying slate rubble, finishing up the post-closure plan on closing the landfill, finishing our spring grading. We also have some routine sign work to complete and the guardrail repair on Route 153. Thank you for that, Keith.
Thank you.
Keith, that's great. That's what I've been looking for for a long time. Thank you. The, the road, the post-closure plan is coming together pretty well?
Yeah, we've basically got to get a gate up, Mike, and fill in a little bit of erosion there, which is not really too bad. And there's only one pipe that really concerns me, because I, actually, when I read it and he said there was five, I was only recalling four, but the fifth one is out in the middle of that swamp, not too far off the edge of 153. We're not going to have, we're not going to have much access to that. Now, whether we can get a cable out through the, right now, I don't, I think you'd need hip waders to even walk to it. So, we'll have to see how that one goes. Certainly, as far as filling it with concrete and stuff, it's going to be quite a battle. But I'm thinking maybe we can get tobacco on the bank there with it, extend tobacco out and get some kind of a chain on it and just pull that monitor well right out. It's got to be just in the mud, and that, I can't believe it's as deep as the other one, so. But yeah, that's, basically, went over and looked at it and checked everything out. I'll just probably get a gate at like Tractor Supply or something, and we'll set some posts and hang it. And that'll be done, and the rest is, is pretty minor, so.
Excellent. That'll be good.
It'll go pretty quickly, I think. I know the metal sleeves will pull pretty easily, because we actually were able to slide them up when we did the closure there. When we capped the landfill, we had to slide them up to keep them above grade. And they are, I think they'll just continue to slide right out. And either way, we'll get them cut off a foot below grade and get the, get the wells filled, and then that's done. That's the, that's the biggest part of it, probably. The rest is just putting up the gate and then a little bit of erosion control and all blocking off the access road in from the back, so. Which, we'll probably just put a slate berm across that.
Yeah, sounds good. That's all we need.
And so, yeah, that's probably something we'll work on, on our, you know, when the weather's good, we probably have the grader running. And when it's not grading weather, we're doing, well, we've been able to grade and do some of the other stuff, too. We started on the Switch Road a little ahead of schedule, because we had a beaver issue out there that actually overtopped the road at Baskishuba's old place there. So, we, we've been working out there, you know, well, I basically got it opened up so it would flow for the weekend, and then we worked there yesterday, a little more today. We've got two culverts installed over there, and we've got three or four more. Then we've got five, I guess, to change on Betts Bridge. And, I mean, I'm doing this in anticipation that we're going to be able to go forward with some of that work, so. And the Switch Road in particular is going to be pretty minimal cost, because I, I think the quarry out there are going to all cooperate with us. And we may even not even have to haul that rock. We may have it coming on their pit trucks, so.
Can't beat that for a deal. We gotta, we gotta take advantage of that.
Yeah, and we'll still have some rental on something to spread it. But, you know, I think it'll, I think it'll be delivered right to us. And that's from not just one quarry, that's from all of them out there, pretty much. Paul Lobis and, and Pedro's and whatnot, you know. And when we can get it coordinated so they're ready, and, and we'll have to get ready when they're ready. So I think we can get that far end stretch done pretty quickly, so.
Well, that sounds like a big plan.
Right. And then Betts Bridge Road, I think, you know, that's minimal enough where we don't have a lot of rental. We're going to have to, when we get to that point where we're going to have to visit our budget and see what impacts all of this is, is having on it and make a decision there. That's a judgment call, a game time decision probably there, you know. We don't have to make that decision yet, in my opinion, so.
Okay. We're probably at least a month out on that anyways, right?
That's, that's my guess, yes.
Okay.
So, and, you know, and it's, it's, everything is an unknown at this point. So we'll just, we'll go forward with anticipation that we're going to be able to do that stuff. And we aren't out nothing, because we're still ready to go forward with it when the time comes, if we get the preliminary work done, so.
Okay, that sounds good. Howard, Howard, did, did different, you had a chance to experiment with some different top coats of material. Do you have any opinion on them so far, or is it still too early?
Yeah, I don't think my opinion has changed much. You know, I really like the stuff from Glusha. It's a, you know, rock product, and it's, if I have to fault it, it's a little coarse, and it's a, you know, a rumblier ride, and it doesn't smooth out quite as well. But it, I think it's a better product than what we get from SLC, and it's more consistent. You know, over there, we, it's always a mystery sometimes what you're getting, a fine, fine load or a stony load, and, you know, you can blend them together after a while. And, you know, the gravel works fine, particularly on top of the slate. And it's closer to home, so that's the advantage. The only substantial difference in cost is in the trucking cost.
Well, I think that the Glusha product worked really good on, on the Heatherington Road. I'm very impressed with how well it held up, which works, so. But that's good.
Mike, can I make a comment? This is Harry.
Absolutely, Harry.
Keith, the work that you did, you just finished, I guess it was last week or the week before, grading the Rupert Mountain Road?
Yeah.
And did you use that new topping material on that?
No, that was local gravel on, well, we used a little bit of the SLC Shear Pack material by Larry Leslie's, but the rest of what we covered there was just with local gravel.
It was just a typical thing you've been using all along?
Correct.
Because it seemed, it seemed to have more rock in it when you, when you first finished, which has now been, you know, settled, settled under because of all the, we've had a lot of, a lot of truck traffic, traffic we get. But it is certainly a lot better than it had been. I don't know what you think, John, but except for that one spot right in front of your, your mailbox, John, where it's, I don't know, you sink down in that just walking, walking with the dog. No, I think.
No, no, what's with that spot?
I, I think it worked out good and, uh, uh, it isn't mud season ready yet, but, uh, uh, I think it's ended up good. And, uh, the, I've also heard reports about one of your neighbors, Mike, uh, was very happy with his part of Bauer Road. So.
Well, that, that's good.
I think we've cured that, uh, oh.
I have one other question though. There's, there's a, uh, uh, John, just, uh, north of your house, uh, where the, uh, road grades down. Uh, there's a trench that's been dug, I guess, to get drainage water to the culvert. Did you do that? Or did, uh, did Keith's crew do that?
I didn't do anything. There was never, I don't even, there was never a culvert down below those ponds. Um, uh, until way down in the corner on the short turn. Um, but many years ago, there was a culvert put in near where that dead oak was. And, uh, it shoots water to the west. But other than that,
Yeah.
Nothing I've done.
Well, there's, there's a deep trench there that, uh, seems to be draining, uh, draining very well. Whereas, uh, on the, on the south side, if you continue up toward my house, uh, you hit the rise, the, the high point right after your driveway, John. And as it goes back down toward the next culvert between your house and my house, um, there, it's puddling there and it constantly puddles and then it overfloods, uh, onto the road. And that's one of the things that makes it soggy there. Uh, is there some way Keith that we can get that, uh, on the west side of the road? Cut down a little bit so it drains down toward the culvert?
Yeah, well, it needs substantial ditch, substantial ditch cleaning down through there is what it needs, right from the brow of the hill towards you from John down to the big culvert.
Yes.
I know exactly what you're talking about. Yes.
Yeah, it's, it does need some major cleaning.
Yes. And it actually needs it where that trench is where it's a, that's a pretty crude application. What that is, is particulating the grader and putting the front tire over in the mud and driving down through there to cut a rut. So the water will go somewhere besides lay in the road. And, uh,
Yeah, better than nothing.
Well, well, no, it works. It drains the water there.
Yeah.
And it's, um, you know, it's a similar situation that we see all over town in the fact that, that our roads have widened out into what used to be our ditches. So we have less ditch. There used to be a ditch down through in front of that, uh, uh, white oak tree there on John's where I put that rut down through there. And, you know, there used to be more of a ditch from the brow of the hill going to the culvert towards your place as well. And now, you know, with increased traffic and everything else, we sacrificed ditch space and made the road bigger. Just,
Yeah.
Just basically because that's where people are driving. And, uh,
Well, the ditch on the east side is working quite well. But it's, it's really boggy down on the west side.
Yeah, but we're aware of that up past John's. And, you know, if we have, uh, time and resources enough, it's certainly on the list to be done. But it's, uh, you know, it depends on these other things. We, we wouldn't do it here probably until we had some dry weather and the water quit running. So.
Yeah.
And then it would be more, be more manageable. But, uh,
Right, right. Okay.
Watch out, the turtle signs are going up pretty soon.
Yeah.
Keith, is the material that Harry's?
Go ahead, Mike.
Is it Keith, the material that Harry's talking about, is that stuff from our pit or stuff you got from Chet?
Uh, I think there's some other things that went on there. When we filled the mud in up there, we had some, you know, some terrible mud up there. We actually put some stone through it and we put some dirty coarser stuff that we had. It was some we separated from making crushed gravel when Chet was in the pit. And then we topped it off with some of that fine stone that we got from, uh, Peckham. Remember the junk stone that, we still had some of that piled at the pit. And we used that sparingly to kind of nurse us through mud season and keep people moving as best we could. So, um, some of those places up there that had that stone application on the road were, it was very stony because it was, uh, was some of that, I don't know, three quarter minus stone that we got from Peckham was mixed in with it. So. And then I think what Harry's also seeing is some of the results of our coarse winter sand product that we put down over the winter. Because we're seeing, you know, we're seeing that sand layer is coarser now. And when, when we grade it, it, uh, you know, it brings them to the surface with a bit system. And then, uh, you know, like Harry said, it gets wet and they press down in, but it should make a pretty good driving surface if we can get them dried out. So.
Yeah, so far, so good. Even with a couple of days of heavy rain, uh, we don't get, we don't get the boggy conditions that we had before.
Excellent.
Well, I can show, I can show you some of them in town, Harry, but your road is not one of them. So, so.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So, we, we still have some of that and that's what we're working on. So. Uh, another thing is, we need to consider, Mike, is, uh, or the whole board is potentially a new bit system for our grader. Um, it's just plain getting worn out. It's worn so thin from the abrasion of the gravel that, it's hard to keep the sockets in it and things like that. It's, uh, well, we've had it two years longer than we've had our, our new grader, which is 17 years old now. So, it's, you know, we're looking at 18, 19 years. And other towns have been replacing them at 10. So, um,
That's, that's a pretty good.
Thirty-five hundred dollars.
How much?
Thirty-five hundred dollars.
Where do you normally get that from?
Well, we can get it through Nortrax or we can get it through, uh, Kay Caneely, who we buy a lot of our cutting edges from. Um, and, you know, there's, uh, the Kenda Metal is, uh, you know, the major player in that. Theirs is very expensive, but there's, uh, that's a couple thousand dollars more actually. So the one we're looking at is, I know Wells has got one, Dambie's got one. They've had for a couple of years and they're pretty satisfied with them. So. It's probably the way to go. I don't know if it's something you want to jump on right now or try to struggle through spring grading and get in next year's budget after July 1 and pick off. So. Just a, just a warning, you know? So, we need to, we need to consider it because it's, uh, it's no fun to get a road tour up and have to go back and weld bit sockets in so you can smooth it back out. So.
Right. I, I know a salesman from Contractor Sales that's just pretty, pretty good about stuff like that. I don't know if he might be able to come up with a, a decent price too.
Well, send me his information. I'd be glad to talk with him.
Okay. Yeah, he's, he's really good. He's on the ball. He gets back to you and stuff. So that's, that's why I like working with him. He knows his product. So. Um, the other thing is, you want to give us an update on that dumpster?
Oh, well, that's a, uh, he did come over and visit us. And he looked at it. And what he said was, he can't move it. It's too big. And it's, uh, he can't get it on his truck. So what he suggested, what he would do if we wanted to was to, he would put dumpster there. We would transfer it into his dumpster with our backhoe or whatever. And then he would haul it and dump it. We would have to pay the dumping fee. And then what he would like for his transportation would be the dumpster in the end. He would take it. And then he would cut it down and put the different style hook on the front of it so that it would work on his truck. So. My thoughts were if we were gonna do that, we could take a rainy day and transfer it onto one of our dump trucks and deliver it and dump it and then drag it around back somewhere out of sight and out of mind.
Okay. Could Noel, could Noel move that dumpster?
Well, I, I talked with Noel a year ago about it. And he said he thought that he could move it. And then, I don't know. And I, actually, the last I spoke with him was, uh, Kelly Waite's auction. And, um, he, uh, I don't know. I can try him again. And whether it's just something that he was too busy and didn't want to mess with at the time or what. I can, uh, I can call Noel back, but I kind of, when I first talked with him, it seemed to be that he could, uh, could dump it and he was interested. And then when I called him back, he was kind of dismissive of it. So.
Yeah. Well, he may not have a lot to do. He may not have a lot to do right now, so he might be more interested.
Right. Garbage has got to move. So those guys are working every day.
Yeah, they're allowed to do that.
I'll reach out to him again. I'll reach out to him again.
Anybody else have anything for Keith? No, I guess not. Thank you for joining us.
Uh, this is Chuck. Keith?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, did, okay, so we know the roll offs still there. Did we get rid of the televisions yet?
No.
Oh, that's one? I shot Clarence a text because I didn't know that he had contacted you. He did say that if we need to get rid of tires, Hubbard's in Rutland is the best place to get rid of them. They're only like three bucks a piece up at Hubbard's.
He did tell me that too. He did tell me that too. But, uh, yeah, if that dumpster was shorter, he could get it on his truck. But he said he won't have power enough to tip it over, maybe even with us picking up on the back end of it. And then he can't dump it because he can't, you know, get it high enough without the back end hanging off his truck. So. It's, uh, I will reach out to Noel. And, um, find out yes or no, you know, just simple answer. And, um, and if that can't happen, then we'll probably plan on loading it on our dump trucks and trucking it down there and dumping it off. Because we can sort it as we load. The tires that go in there are, uh, you know, that's minimal. But actually, if we were gonna take a load of tires, we've got some around town we could pick up and add to it just to get rid of.
Right. Okay. Well, we'll keep working on that then. Thank you.
Um,
Okay.
Mike, I, there was one, uh, comment on the subject from Frank in the box here that asked if anybody had contacted the state police about the town filing a lost or abandoned property claim on the dumpster. That was something that was brought up as a possibility last meeting as well.
Right. We haven't worried about that till we see what our, if we have viable options yet. We probably don't even really want to end up with it. Assessor's report?
There was nothing, um, directly submitted to me from the assessor's office.
I can just tell you that Karen is coming in regularly on Mondays and Wednesdays.
Okay. Well, thank you. Want to go over the town clerk's memo?
Did you guys all get it?
Yes.
Okay.
I did.
I did.
Okay. Um, yeah, um, if you had a chance to look it over, um, basically we're keeping the office closed to the public till, um, the governor releases the stay home, stay safe order. We're not equipped right now to handle an influx of people. Um, in order to open, the governor has set some standards, um, according to CDC and Vermont Department of Health. Um, and we just don't have the supplies to conform with that, which would, which would require sanitizing three times a day, the work area. Uh, if, if somebody did come into the building, they'd have to be sanitizing, um, the area that that person was in. Uh, we're not gonna, we are not interested right now in letting anybody into any of our offices. We don't even go into each other's offices. We've scattered ourselves, like I mentioned in the last meeting, we've scattered ourselves so that we're not all there at the same time. Um, we've been trying to get some supplies. Um, yesterday, a town clerk in Vermont, uh, gave us a tidbit on, um, getting some gloves and masks and some sanitizer. Um, so I talked to that person. Um, and she, we're gonna put that order in tomorrow. Um, the secretary of state's office has promised us that they're providing us with PPE for the upcoming, uh, primary and general election. Um, needless to say, I'm very stressed about that. Um, but they've promised some supplies for that. So we'll see how that goes. They're also talking about sending, um, 100% voter, um, early ballots out to 100% of the registered voters. Uh, they would, they would can, take care of the postage too and the return postage for any voter who wanted to vote absentee. That would be for the primary. I don't know if they were considering that for the general election. Um, so, um, Julie's gonna bring up too about, um, getting some masks from telescope uh, for each town official and town employee so that we all have our own washable mask that we can use over and over. Um, I'd like to ask the board to, um, consider for, on two levels. One level for, uh, when we do open up to the public and we start figuring out how to let people in, which would probably be by appointment for the time being. Um, I would like a, uh, split door to my office uh, as a way of containing people from coming into my office, but still giving them access. Right now, what I've been doing is, um, all of the researchers, I've been doing all the records retrieval for them. They provide me with book and page numbers or I provide them with indices. Um, and then they just get back to me and say, could you get this book and page as well? Um, and who knows when people are gonna start coming in. They, the governor has issued, uh, first research, like assessors and realtors to, to start going back to work. But I, there hasn't been much thought about how much, how many points of contact there are for these people to come into offices. And there's a lot of points of contact. So that would be something that I would like the board to think about. I'm gonna do some investigating to see what the cost would be to incorporate, to maybe adapt the door that's already there. Um, the other thing is, um, I am coming into the office several times a week, um, just like Julie and Karen. And, um, Jonas comes in on his Wednesdays and keeping things going. And I have found that people have been very supportive, thankful that we're handling things the way we are. We're looking out for ourselves primarily, but we're also looking out for the community, uh, keeping them safe. Uh, the dog licenses are continuing to come in, uh, by mail and they're getting sent back by mail. So, anyway, um, that's all I have right now unless anybody has any questions for me.
Okay. Do you have any, any ideas of who may be able to modify that door or at least look at it to see if that's an option?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call a couple of friends. I have a couple of friends who are carpenters and just see if that's something that can be done. A lot of the, um, town clerks, of course, there's a lot of, of, um, talk on the listserv and the muni net about what towns are doing for their clerks and treasurers to cut, create a safety barrier. Um, a lot, one of the things is they're putting up Plexiglas, uh, sneeze, sneeze guards, they're called.
Yeah.
I don't have a counter that, that that can be installed. Um, but, you know, there is, there is some concerns, you know? So, um, I will ask these, the couple of friends that I have and see how to, how it can be done to convert an existing door to a split door. to convert an existing door to a split door that can be locked on the bottom and opened on the top. Uh, I'm just thinking about who knows how long we're gonna have to be wearing face masks and keeping social distance. Um, but we need to try to keep as much of the town office, uh, sanitized as possible, even when we do start introducing other people into the mix.
Right. And whoever your carpenters that can look at that, they may be able to have an optional, uh, you know, Plexiglas shield that could go in place of the top piece of the door, so you just had a small slot to hand documents through or whatever. That could be incorporated in that project and it may, may be reasonable, so.
Right. Yep. I'll look into that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Does anybody have any other questions for Deb?
Just that, uh, one item from Frank, um, regarding using, possibility of using curbside service and charging realtors, et cetera, for the service might be a cleaner option. Sneeze screens can be made, saw one today, with a few one by three to make a stand for the floor with Plexiglas. Contributions from Frank.
Thank you, Frank.
Um, Ed, please, I have a question regarding any alterations. Would that have to be run past, uh, preservation of Vermont or is it just on the exterior? What, I mean?
I think that, I think the interior has been modified several times. Um, it doesn't have, I mean, the office that I'm in isn't the original office from the building. Um, so that door, um, is not original. I mean, it's not an original construction. It doesn't have unique hardware with it. Um, so I don't think it would be a problem. We're not changing the walls. Uh, it's just simply modifying door. Um, in this day and age, I think safety and security kind of are pretty, pretty prioritized topic.
I totally agree with you about just, just the question because I know we can't even.
Right.
The front door, say nothing about, you know, we can't even.
I mean, we, we can ask, um.
Probably be better to just ask.
Yeah, we can. I don't know who the contact, I can ask Karen.
Sure. Yeah, there you go. Yeah.
Karen would know.
Yeah. I'll ask Karen if there's any funny kickback on that. Thanks, Ed, for bringing that up.
It seems like from what I remember, it was the front and the two sides. They weren't even all that concerned about what the back of the building looked like. And I don't think it had anything to do with the interior.
No, you can do anything you want to the back, basically.
Right. And I don't think, I think the interior in the back, all are in the same category. It just needs to maintain its original. From, from past conversations that I've heard before, I, I would certainly want to check with somebody. So.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Well, thank you, Deb, for joining us.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Julie? You're up.
Okay, um, there are two warrants to be signed. I emailed them to all of you. Hopefully that's working. There were 24 checks, 13 accounts payable and 11 payroll. The payroll for the week was $8,738.46. Total accounts payable was $15,659.34. The monies from the general fund were $10,440.53. The highway, $94.57.27, and wastewater, $4,500. Uh, if any departments are ordering supplies that are specific to COVID safety guidelines, I need to know in order to track our COVID-specific invoices. Um, and like Deb said, I am planning to order some PPE this week for town employees and officials from Telescope. Uh, that's all I had that was new. And then I had, um, some things that we had previously talked about. Uh, last meeting, I brought up that there are some municipalities that are looking at waiving penalties and interest on taxes due for a certain amount of time. And I did mention that the only pending payment in Polit right now is the sewer, the final sewer payment, which would go delinquent on May 10th. Um, I don't think we would, could do anything to change the deadline. Um, I think our option would be to have, um, if we were interested in doing anything, would be to have a, a Board of Abatement meeting with a blanket, um, motion to abate penalties and interest for 30 days or something of the sort. And I think that would just have to come from the tax collector. I don't think it would have to come from all of the people on the wastewater system. So I'm looking for thoughts on that.
My, my thought is let's see how the, see how it comes in. I wouldn't want to make any. We, might, might see how much you gather and if there's a huge amount of outstanding, then maybe offer some options, but just see how it all unfolds before we make it, or do you have a reason why we should make it in advance?
Um, I guess the... I don't know that it makes a ton of difference, but I mean, if people are struggling, if we did something before they went delinquent, because once they go delinquent, that penalty hits.
Okay.
That was, that was all. But I am, I have some checks that I have received. I mean, some people have already paid everything and some people haven't paid anything, so. It's across the board.
Okay.
Um, Ed, Ed, again, did, I could be wrong on this, but hasn't this, didn't the state issue something on the penalty would be waived? I don't know if that was statewide or just state thing, but something about the penalty on delinquent taxes would be waived for.
I don't think they have the authority to do that to, just for municipalities, um.
Okay.
I mean, even, we only have the authority to abate municipal portions of taxes, right? So even if someone had their property tax abatement, we would still, we can't waive the education portion of it. We only can do our own thing. And I don't think the state has any authority or control over that. Um, I think it has to go through the BOA.
Okay. Yeah, I thought I saw something somewhere, but maybe not.
Julie, I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, go ahead, Doc.
The, the COVID-19, um, costs that you're, uh, tallying up, uh, are you, are you gonna make the, um, application for reimbursement to the state?
Um, so I was under the impression that you had information about that and I've been just sort of keeping track of which of invoices are specific. And I wasn't gonna do anything for at least a month until we know where we're at.
Yeah, I, I can do that. I can make the, um, the application for the reimbursement. I would, it's too soon to do it, but.
Right.
Just wanted to make sure we have a, who's doing what, that's all.
Yeah, I'll just keep track of what orders have come through my office. I know, um, the wastewater facility has had to buy extra PPE. Um, I, I don't think the highway, any of the supplies that were ordered recently were COVID-specific. Um, but Deb and, um, Keith may know more about that. Um, but there is, there's stuff that Deb has ordered in our office. I know that, you know, it's not a ton of stuff, but we do have some stuff.
Yep. All right. Yeah, just, um, at some, we'll, um, put it all together and I'll apply for the, um, reimbursement.
Okay. That sounds good. Um, and then the other, and then the, the last thing on my memo was that we had talked last time about the, um, signatures on town checks.
Okay. I know I, I started a conversation again today. I, I was quite slack on, on getting that going. But I have a couple more questions I'd like to ask. And, uh, but does anybody else had any more opinion beside you, Chuck, on the signing of the checks? Did anybody thought about that and?
Yes.
Project con?
I have. John here. Uh, the first thing is I very much appreciated, uh, getting our separate Gmail accounts. Keep it away from our, uh, personal or business accounts. Appreciate it getting the, uh, uh, warrants early. Uh, it was very hard for me. Maybe I can't juggle two things at once to, in the middle of a meeting, trying to read the warrants at the same time something else is going on with our select board meeting. So I appreciate it seeing it ahead of time. So if I did have a question, I could either email Julie or, or bring it up at the meeting. Um, I did have a citizen call me this evening before the meeting, uh, expressing their concern and bringing up some history of when he thought that, uh, the double signature was initiated after some problems in the 1960s. Um, and he expressed, uh, that he wanted to continue having that. I, so I just wanted to pass that along. Uh, but I think our oversight, getting the warrants early before the meeting, uh, allows at least me to give much better oversight than I could before.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. I do agree. I, I think it's great to be able to, to look the warrants over in advance of the meeting and trying, instead of trying to hustle through everything. So that, with the Gmail account setup is, has been very, very beneficial, too. I just got to figure out everybody's addresses to get them put into it, but it's all, it's all a work in progress and, and a great, a great way to, to separate this from our personal lives or business lives, which it, and, uh, and as far as, as far as the, the check signing goes, um, I still have a couple more questions. I would, I'd prefer not to, uh, make any decisions at this, at this time. But, uh, Julie has sent out several emails with, with questions and answers from, from different people in the, in similar positions as hers. And I do appreciate that research, Julie. So, um, we'll, we'll try one more, one more session and then see where that goes. I'll try and get, have my, all my answers that I need by then. And I'll share them with you as soon as I get them with the rest of the board members.
Um, this is, Deb, um, just out of curiosity, um, has the, have any members of the board contacted any other select boards, um, from other towns in reference to how they're handling it and what they feel works? Um, I think I find, I find in my position, um, as town clerk, and if I have any concerns or issues, I find that my peers, um, in clerk world have been an invaluable reference. Um, and likewise, I think you would find that, um, other select boards in other towns might offer, uh, some opinions, maybe two in favor of and, and against. Um, but I think it might be worth touching base with maybe like Killington or Rutland or Wendy Wilton and see how they do it up there. Um, I know that through this whole thing, there's so many unanswered questions for everybody. And I even had a town administrator contact me today with regard to some issues that they were having. So, um, just, just as a sidebar, it, it's a, there's a lot of great resources out there within our own municipal communities, um, as you're going forward and thinking about how to answer Julie's questions or, or her proposal.
Julie has had some input back from several of her other towns and such.
Right. But I think what Deb is suggesting is that you, as select board members, reach out to other select board members about what select board members in other towns do in that capacity. I reached out to treasurers, um, and I also would recommend that you would reach out to towns that have auditors and what the auditors do, because like I said in that original meeting, that is the separation. Auditors make sure that the, the finances are accurate and select boards authorize the finances to be spent.
Okay. Thank you.
By you reaching out to other select board members, you would see how other towns do what you do. Um, and then by reaching out to auditors, you would find great ways for monitoring the financial health of the town.
Thank you for that, Julie.
Yep. And I, um, I don't know if there are other questions that I can answer. I did forward on a lot to everybody. I don't know that everybody got everything I sent. I know, um, Mike, you and John and Ed responded that you had received the emails. Um, so I know that you got them. Um, I also spoke with the auditor that we employ, um, not to get his opinion because I don't believe that we should be getting his guidance on how to establish our system since he is auditing us and making sure our systems are appropriate. I just don't think it would be appropriate to ask him to guide us on how to set those up. Um, but I did ask him for what he, what his methodology is to make sure that checks are not issued without warrants associated with them. And he said that he does, he looks at copies of warrants and the populations of checks that correspond to them and just make sure that they're accurate. And then he also reviews bank statements and reconciliations. He does not look at every single warrant and every single check because he just doesn't have the time to do that, but they do random sampling. And that is how they do what they do. I also would urge everyone to look at the VLCT website because they have model policies and they have a lot of great ideas on how to establish policies that protect the finances of the town. Um, and I think, I think it's worth looking at. And then I also spoke with the bank to just double check who is authorized signers and what the structuring of that is. And when I spoke to them, they said that it is set up that there's two signatures required and one of those signatures must be a select board member. And they have all five of you and no one else as signers on that line. The other signature was required to be a treasurer or the assistant. And I asked them how they would make sure that that mechanism was enforced and they said that they really couldn't. If a specific check was flagged to them, then they would notice, but otherwise they would not notice. And then, in fact, they told me that the two signatures that they were supposed to make sure one of was, which was on the check are Judy and Eva. So I don't think their system works.
Not very well.
And I also do think that there are, um, things that we should do differently, um, as far as internal controls. And one of those, I think, um, I have in the works regardless, which is to have Kim Ayers do the bank reconciliations. And I will continue paying the bills and she would then be the one that is looking at the bank statements and making sure that everything that comes through is accurate. And I also, lastly, the one thing, um, I truly believe that it is not okay for me to issue checks without signed warrants. So I won't be anymore. This is the last week that I will do that. From now on, when I have a copy of a signed warrant authorizing me to issue checks, I will issue checks.
Okay, that's, that's fine. So then you'll issue the check, the, possibly the next day, probably, after the meeting or?
Yep.
Okay. And then somebody, then our approved signers can, can sign the checks after you issue them?
Yep.
Okay. That's the way the, the model is, that the warrant is all signed before you make the check anyways. From everything that we've seen, all the documentation says that that's the correct course of action.
Right.
Okay. So does anybody else have any questions for Julie?
How do we in?
Michael, this is.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, John.
Uh, how do we sign the warrants and get three signatures on the warrants remotely?
Well, you have authorized one board member to sign the warrants on the behalf of the whole board.
Okay.
For the stay home, stay safe order duration. So that still stands.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So if there's no more questions for Julie, would somebody like to make a motion that we sign the warrants? That we have our?
Well, you have, I think you have.
Just a minute. Let me, let me speak if you can. This is Chuck.
Yeah.
Okay. So I understand that you're going to put this off for the next meeting in two weeks.
I would like to gather more information before we, well, basically, the only thing we're going to do is change what we have. If we don't do anything, then we're going to stay the way we are. Unless, unless everybody wanted to vote to stay the way we are right now and?
Well, we got a email from a retired treasurer who suggested that we still stay with the two signature system. I think every board member got a copy of that letter.
We have had it.
We can, we can put this off for two weeks. And decide then, I guess. But everybody on the board knows my opinion and it has not changed. So we'll all meet again in two weeks.
I think it's important to note also that Julie is our elected treasurer. And I think that her input is very important to the forward motion of our town. So I think that as you have considered the opinions of a past treasurer whom we all respect greatly, I think you also need to respect the opinions of our current treasurer.
Well, if she wishes to be accountable, I mean, I don't know why she would, but that's her decision.
This is Kristen. Another, this message, I'm sorry, I missed it the first time, but Frank contributed, LCT insurance might bond the treasurer. Has anyone asked the LCT for advice and any guidelines they have or mandate? That just came from Frank.
My assumption he's referring to VLCT, not League of City.
Or the, or the leagues of city, yeah, the, I'm guessing.
And I did. And I forwarded that information on to all of the board members. And, and I believe that their, their stance was about if you, if you wanted to require two signatures, and maybe this is a treasurer that is saying this. I can't remember. I don't have everything directly in front of me. But if you want to require two signatures, they should be the signatures of the treasurer and the assistant treasurer, just because the accountability, like the check writing ability should not fall to the select board. And that's where VLCT stood on separation of duties. Because it is their belief that the select board controls the funds in that they, I am not allowed to write checks that you have not told me to write. So you control me in that regard. Then I am responsible for the funds, so I pay. And then the auditor is responsible for making sure that I have done only what I was told to do as far as writing checks. Only the checks that I was authorized to write were written. That is verified by an auditor. The independence of those three branches is what they believe provides the best separation of duties and internal controls. So I didn't make this up. I did not spring this on anyone to be rude or authoritarian. And I brought this up to the board chair before the first Zoom meeting that we had. And I brought it up at the second meeting because no one responded to me. So that was the, the delay.
This is Ed. I would just like to say, I would feel, I do feel more comfortable with two signatures. And I'm going to say once again, more for Julie than for anyone else. Because with just her name on that check, if anyone in town has a match to grind with her, all they've got to do is just whisper that word, that embezzlement or whatever, or she screwed around and she's, her reputation's dumped. With two names, it's a lot harder to do that. I'm just looking out for her, I, I feel. Her, you know.
I think if we have strong internal controls, I'm not super concerned about that. I appreciate that you're looking out for that. And again, the two signatures thing is still an option if that is something that you are really, really strongly feeling. And I can understand that. And I do know there is a history in this town. And I completely understand why people feel that this is a mechanism to protect both me and the town funds. I, I get it. I just have, I believe that, that there are ways to verify all of this information. They may be a little trickier than sitting at a table in the town hall and signing a check, but I think they're more effective. I truly believe that they're more effective. And I think that that's why a lot of other towns do them that way. And I also, the last thing that I would point out is that there, I have seen checks from the state of Vermont this week, and I've seen checks from the Meadowwee School District this week. And none of them have more than one signature. I think that strong internal controls are necessary and that we should probably revisit them. I have established new policies when I first took this office. And there's never not a good time to have a good policy. So I would be more than willing to look at some new policies that would give you guys comfort.
If I may add something, this is Kristen. Just something to consider, and it's not explicit, but I decided to take a look at our conflict of interest policy when thinking about this that the board signed. Two moments, two mentions regarding financial conflict are made in that, stating that a direct financial conflict of interest arises when a public officer acts on a matter that has a direct financial impact on that officer. An additional mention was an indirect financial conflict of interest arises when a public officer acts on a matter that has a financial impact on a person or group closely tied to the officer. So those are just two things to consider. Again, it's not a direct correlation, but I did just want you all to know that there are mentions of finances in the conflict of interest policy signed by the select board. So just something to be aware of.
Okay. Does anybody else have any opinions or anything they want to say on this subject at this point?
I have something on the other, I have something on a different subject that was mentioned during this, but not related when it's appropriate for that.
Okay. Well, I guess go ahead then, please.
It's just regarding the emails. I just wanted to, again, say thank you for your, your willingness to get on and log into your new emails. I too think it's going to be very beneficial and just a nice way for us to be able to communicate as a municipality too and make sure that it's, no waters are getting muddied in your personal lives. I do want to make sure, are you all comfortable if I exclusively am sending communications to the new email addresses at this point? Or do you still wish for me to kind of send to both as you're transitioning?
It's fine with me to send it just to the new one.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay with me here and John?
Okay. Thank you.
Ed, I'm okay with it.
Chuck, are you okay with the new email address?
I am also.
Great. And Bob, I know you're working on it, Bob Jones.
I am also. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate that. I won't spam you, I promise.
And I'll try not to spam you.
So now back to the warrants.
So the last meeting, due to the fact that you made the motion to authorize Bob to go in and sign them on your behalf, there was, at the last meeting, you did not make a motion to sign them due to the fact that you aren't physically signing them here tonight. I don't know.
But I, well, we did see him either, but this time we did.
Okay.
So I guess we, it would probably be good if we made a motion. Does everybody feel that way or?
Yeah, whatever.
Yep.
Okay. So would somebody like to make that motion then, that we sign the warrants that Julie shared with us before the meeting?
I'll make that motion here, John.
John. Thank you, John. Does anybody want to second it? Somebody wants to?
Ed or Chuck should second it if I'm going to be the one to sign them.
I'll second that.
Okay. Thank you, Ed. All in favor? Chuck? You in favor of signing the warrants?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay. Approved. Thank you. Emergency management director.
Bob's wishing he went first after all.
Yeah, I did now. Yeah, right. So this, this is the time of the year where we have to approve the local emergency management plan. I sent it all to use probably a week and a half ago. So what's involved is there's an adoption form normally signed by Mike Beecher. This year, because of the current COVID situation, they're allowing us to just type your name in, Mike. So what I need is approval from the board to accept the local emergency management plan, which includes as one of its enclosures, the new continuity of operations plan. I have recommendations on that. But now I'm just looking for a, a approval of the local emergency management plan for this year.
Did everybody have a chance to look that over? It all looked good to me. Anybody want to make a motion to approve that, adopt that emergency management plan that Bob had drafted?
I will make that motion to say.
Ed? Do I hear a second?
This is Bob. I'll second it.
Okay. Bob, Bob seconded it. Any more discussion? All in favor? Chuck?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Approved. Thank you. Thank you very much for your hard work, Bob.
Yeah, a couple of, a couple of comments. I understand from the conversation before that you all have new email addresses. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, Kristen, if you could send me those because I have to put those into the emergency operations plan. I have their old email addresses. So I'll change, and I'll send that in. As part of the continuity of operations plan, one of the things I recommend in there is that we look at the computer systems that we have and work out a system if we can so that the town officials can work remotely in the event they have to work remotely. Now, as it turns out, they're working semi-remotely now, Deb and Julie. But the systems, the way I understand it, after talking to Julie and Deb, there's certain parts of the systems, I think, that, certain things that they do that come into the office and do. As part of a continuity of operations plan, you have to consider if the building gets destroyed, let's say the building burns down, how can they continue to do their, do their jobs in, completely from a remote location? So that's something that we should, we should look at. And I'd be willing to work with Deb and Julie on how the town can accomplish that.
I guess in order to, to do something remote, we'd probably have to talk to the IT guy on that, I would.
Yeah, I think, I think that's probably true. I, I think so. But it, I think I could do a quick survey and, and, and between the, Deb and Julie, look at what, what they do and what has to be done. And then if we have, we can come back and find out, come back to the board and find out whether we need to spend any money with an IT person. But first, we probably should just survey what exactly we would need.
Okay. That would be, that would be excellent if you could do that, quick survey and?
Yeah. The only other point is I, you know, we've been, I've been updating on the emergency management page, the COVID-19 situation. And I've been doing that daily now for about three weeks. I'll continue to do that as long as there's an information that's worthwhile to, to communicate to the, to the town. Some of that information is picked up every once in a while. Deb, you pick it up and put it on your email blast. I know Elizabeth occasionally pulls stuff out of there, puts it on her e-newsletter. But I'll do a day, I continue to do a daily update on that as the state of Vermont and Rutland County.
Okay. That's great, Bob. Thank you.
I've got a question for Bob. It's John.
Go ahead, John.
Wondering, is there any way that, do you get information from Washington County, New York?
Yes, I do. And I, I post that, I, I do get, I do get updates from Washington County. And I, I get those updates occasionally on the website. I think yesterday's
Yeah.
Facebook page. Yesterday's Facebook page, I mentioned Washington County's situation.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Anything from the health officer, Bob, or?
No, I mean, I have some things that are going on that, but I'll report those in my monthly report. And one thing I will say, the weight house on Route 133, a former weight house on 133, there was some complaints about rats in the neighborhood and some garbage left outside. And it took two, two months, three months, but I finally got the bank to clean that up. And they took two dumpsters full of stuff out of the side of the, at least one side of the house. And so that, that problem's all gone.
That's good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I guess we're good. Thank you very much, Bob.
All right. I'm going to sign off.
Have a good night.
Yep. Thank you.
The wastewater treatment plant, the?
0413.
Jenny, Jenny didn't come down because of COVID. But she's been sharing information between Jill and, and her. She's been gathering information and reports. And so she laid out a preliminary plan with, with all that. And maybe, Kristen, you could send that, that I sent that to you, to the rest of the board. I didn't, I don't have their, all their addresses in my Google mail yet.
Yes, I will. Yes, I will, I will send that recent update to the rest of you guys.
That's, that's basically where we're going with that, that study. And other than that, I haven't heard anything, anything about the operation seems to be going all right, so. Any older unfinished business?
No.
No? Any new business?
No.
No? Any public comment?
This is Harry. Kristen, are those, are the select board, the new select board emails going to be put on the website?
I believe they are. I, I gave them to Elizabeth, so I believe they are already there.
Okay, good.
They were, for, this is Kristen. So everybody, no, nobody should feel left out. This is a very recent thing over like the last few days. So we were waiting to kind of get everybody's toes warmed up to their new emails before making them available for people to use to contact. So they will be published, I think, to the, to the website if they're not already.
Thank you.
Hello, this is Frank. Can you hear me?
Hi, Frank.
Yeah, we can, Frank.
Public comment on the treasurer issues. CH Nelson's agency paid out due to missing funds related to treasurers in two different towns, area towns in the past on a bond that was written to do that. Now, the League of Cities towns may have a bond as part of the insurance. That might be something you want to look into as part of this process and find out what the bond insurance company would, would, would want to have to prevent malfeasance because they paid out a lot of money over time and have seen problems that have arose. And the League of Cities towns may already have that in guidance.
Okay, that's good information. Thank you.
And also is, Bob brought this up, is part of a risk management plan, which I haven't heard anything about before, but Bob brought it up, is that if there was a disaster somehow would strike the town hall, be it fire, be it whatever, then part of a risk management plan is a plan to recover. So you don't say, you, you don't show up in the firehouse, fire departments, sitting there and the place is on the ground and you wonder what you're going to do next. The plan would essentially from the minute that any problem would happen with the normal operation of the town due to a destruction of property, you would immediately launch the plan and insure accordingly and, and so that you wouldn't skip a beat.
Yeah, that was all part of that, this year's emergency operation plan, the continuity of operations. That's why you've never heard it before. It was, it was brand new this year.
Okay.
So is there any other public comment? Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
This is Ed, make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank you all for coming.
Oh, wait, sorry, roll call.
Roll call. Chuck?
Chuck, yes.
Yes, Ed?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yeah.